Meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. The first item on our agenda is for approval of the agenda, and I will accept a motion at this time in that regard.
I think we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. There's a second. Thank you, Mr. Falk. All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is five oh. At this time, I'd ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving to information items, Superintendent's Budget Recommendation. Dr. Schickel.
Thank you, Chair Breeden, members of the board, and members of the public. As is an annual tradition, I get to present my recommended budget for the 2223 school year tonight. And before I begin, there is always a lot of work that's done ahead of this presentation, of course. It begins, you know, early in the year where conversations are had with schools about what their future needs may be. Principals submit their requests to Central Office where they're vetted. We then begin conversations with board members in small groups. The, you know, the presentations about expected revenue, expenses, and are, you know, made by Cheryl Mast, who is the person when it comes to the budget in terms of making this actually work. I can go to Cheryl and say, you know, here are some of the things we want to see. And Cheryl either says, you know, well, you either, you know, it's usually a simple answer. Well, either you increase revenue or you lower your expenses elsewhere. So, you know, couldn't do this without Cheryl. And again, publicly, I just want to say thanks for everything you do. And I know Justin's involved a lot in this process as well. And then, of course, the executive team, you know, with Doug Aldifer and Larry Shiflett and Michelle Judd. We have lengthy conversations around all of these topics, you know, what the priorities are, input from board members, input from the public. And then it comes down to also having conversations, and I'll mention this a little bit later, with our counterparts on the county side, our funding body. It's such a unique process in Rockingham County. I talked to WHSV about that again today. I remember a presentation at the VSBA conference years ago about this process. You will see in many school divisions, the superintendent's recommendation, and then the request from the school board is at a level where basically the school board asks for everything they want. And then the funding body says, well, you can't have that. And so then there's this public negotiation, and it really creates tension in many places. And Mr. Breeden did the presentation in Williamsburg and said, well, that's not how it works in Rockingham. There really is a Rockingham way for this, and it involves these longstanding relationships and hard work to create that sense of trust between the funding body and the school board. And a lot of the work is done, you know, in conversations with school board members and members of the Board of Supervisors. So just a couple of weeks ago, we had a liaison committee meeting, again, where members from the Board of Supervisors are there, and two members from the school board, the county administrator, county finance director, and then staff. You know, Cheryl and I were there, and we have, you know, frank conversations around, you know, what the county expects its revenue to be, what school division may be able to expect. And we work through that without, again, making each other look bad in the process. And it serves Rockingham County schools really well. And it's, that process has continued again through this budget season. So budgets always reflect priorities. We always look at, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? What are our goals? What are our values as a school division? One of the key projects that we've undertaken over the last four or five years is our Tiered Systems of Support project. Becky Hill Shiflett, you know, she did a presentation earlier in the school year about this, where years, you know, four years ago, basically, we, you know, we started talking about, what do we do for students who come to school and need additional support? Some need very little support, so this is kind of across-the-board support. But there have to be tiers up to the most intense level. And again, we talked about this recently with the Strong Starts Program at Cabran, you know, where really lives of students are changed in a positive way by providing this intensive assistance. And it was a huge team effort, you know, with a retreat in Winchester and the following work. When we talk about innovation, you've heard a lot about innovation over the last few years. And we always talked about, you know, it's not just innovation for innovation's sake, not just changing things because we can, but based on best practice. Who do we work with to really change things based on what we know about the brain, how people actually learn, and what's best for kids, and how to do that? With a national teacher shortage, that is certainly not new. We had a teacher shortage in the United States before the COVID pandemic. And again, when you look at how many teacher candidates we have at a job fair, where we used to have 500, 600 candidates way back when I did the scheduling in the IT department. You know, now we're down to 150 candidates. Education schools aren't graduating as many education grads anymore. And so it's really important for us to still attract the best teachers and to retain those teachers that we have. And oftentimes, you know, one of the best recruiting tools is how you treat the staff that's already working here. Because that's how people become aware of what a great place Rockingham County Schools is, and that's how we attract candidates, by making sure we focus on what it takes to retain our current staff and how to recruit the most outstanding candidates. We've done a lot over the last few years, especially last year, or two years ago as well, for classified scales. So we started that process, and there's still work to be done, and the current budget, again, will reflect that. We want to make sure that classified staff also see increases in their scales that go beyond the across-the-board raises. Because when we look at surrounding divisions and the region, we want to make sure we are competitive in all areas. And then, again, what I said earlier, you know, the collaboration with Rockingham County, to not say, here's what we need. It doesn't matter what Chief Holloway may need or what Sheriff Hutchinson needs. Those are all important factors. So when we talk to the county, you know, what are the capital improvement needs that have to happen, really countywide? And so those are really good conversations, and that flows into the conversations about what share of increased revenue that the county may have really can go to schools. There isn't a set percentage. We've had some of those conversations, but really, that flexibility, but that teamwork is also part of this budget process. When we talk about, you know, what we want to accomplish in our values, you know, a number of the board members here remember this. We spent an entire year working with staff in our schools to talk about what do we really stand for? You know, what do we want to see in our students? What do successful students exhibit? When we talk about, for example, the five Cs, so what makes a good collaborator? You know, at the state level, it's easy to see those five Cs and say, well, kids need to be able to collaborate. You know, we live in a world that's rapidly changing. You know, we often talk about, you know, the volatility, the uncertainty, and so on, of the world that we live in. And the last two years certainly showed a lot of that. But how do we prepare kids for that? And to say they need to be able to collaborate with people, well, what do we see? What do we actually see when we see a good collaborator? And so the entire school division staff had a chance for input, including the school board. And again, those are reflected here. And then, again, we are key pieces, you know, we focus on relationships, on positive relationships in our buildings. It's about the community. We want learning that is purposeful. And we also want to make sure that we have high-quality education for students to accomplish whatever they can accomplish and what they want to accomplish. It's not about saying everyone needs to be at the same point. There's oftentimes a sense that we want everyone to achieve exactly the same thing. Now, that's not true at all. You know, personally, my brother and I achieved very different things, but he did really well. He was really good using his hands to build things and to create things. And for me, it was easier in the academic world. And so it doesn't mean that we all need the same thing. But we need to make sure that all students have a chance, whether that's through our ag programs or whether that's through our advanced classes, to really achieve at a level they can. And that's one of the things we're very proud of, you know, that in our CTE programs, you know, Eric's right over here, right? The CTE programs that he has built with our schools over the last couple of decades, really. It's amazing when you, when you see in how many ways Rockingham County Schools really stand out and get this credit at the state and national level. So this is what we're about, and so that has to go into what we're talking about with the budget. Tiered Systems of Support, I already mentioned it. Right? We want to make sure that we have a system in place where students have access to intense support, behavior and mental health support when they need it, increasing positive behaviors, and reduce the frequency and duration of negative behaviors. And again, evidence-based, what is the best practice? I remember when the BCBAs came and suggested we put a structure in place. I said, don't bring me a Band-Aid. Let's see what this should look like when it's done the way it really needs to be done. And those BCBAs and behavior specialists now and teachers in our Strong Starts program, they are presenting at national conferences about what they've built as a team and how this helps our kids. And again, we've heard a number of comments recently that board members about this. And again, improving learning environments for all students. This was the original plan, right? So it's always important to look at what you build and then say, is this really accomplishing what we had in mind? So the original Tiered Systems of Support structure in the first year basically looked like this. Well, this is what it looks like right now. So over the years, there was all this additional work, you know, how can we do this better? The whole concept of the Strong Starts Program, you know, that wasn't there in the beginning, right? And so as we saw these kids that have had trouble regulating, how can we help those kids? How can we help the most difficult kids, and how can we try this? And so that's a program, you know, that was added in addition to other things. It really follows kind of this medical model of, you know, what do, where do we need a physician? For example, the most specialized person, you know, for example, our BCBAs. You know, where do we need our psychologists and social workers? But what do we do for first response? Who can help in the short run, you know, when something is going on in a classroom? Who can work with those kids directly? Who can gather the data that we need to see whether it's working, right? Not to just say, oh, wow, look at the kids, this is great. What do we have in terms of data to support that this program is working? What do we see as outcomes? And so there are a lot of things here, the base programs. So where we talked about, you know, not having as many out-of-school suspensions. You know, how do we keep kids in the building? Because when we send them home for behavior, now the behavior doesn't improve. There are very few cases where kids then come back better and say, oh, now I've learned my lesson because I got to spend 10 days at home, right? And so we're working on all kinds of ways to make this better for kids. With our learning environments, Larry Shiflett, you know, Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Learning. You know, that's, it was really important to make sure that we have a position where someone is responsible, to really move the division forward. Again, with a large team, it's always a team effort. When you remember, you know, the Model Schools Conference and 70-some staff members attending. That's, that's unheard of, but we did it because we needed to make sure that everyone understood what this takes. And it wasn't just administrators, you know, and teachers. There were members of that Tiered Systems of Support team there as well. And it really is based on learning and figuring out whether we are doing what's best for kids. It doesn't mean that education 15 years ago wasn't good. We had great education, but there are things you learn. You know, 25 years ago, we didn't know of, you know, in terms of brain science, you know, all the things we know now about how people actually learn and all the strategies that we can improve. But when you do learn it, and when you do find out what works better, you have to do better. That's really, we would be, it would not be appropriate for us to say, oh, well, but it's good enough, right? We talked about this a couple of years ago. Good enough is not good enough for us. And so when we talk about major innovation themes, right, brain science, and not just for learning, but for behavior. What do we know about regulation when kids, you know, escalate? And what that, what that cycle looks like? And how, what can we do to intervene early? And to intervene in a way that allows that child to function in a classroom before they escalate to a point where we have to evacuate a classroom, for example, right? Because the chairs are flying through the room. So it's both for learning and behavior. And of course, behavior is learned. And so, you know, these aren't two really separate things, but it's important to talk about behavior as part of this as well. We talked about reframing the curriculum. Jay McTie, you know, what do we want to see? That document you saw earlier, what do we see as outcomes? And then how do we design our environment backwards in terms of, okay, what activities do we need to have in our classrooms that ultimately lead to those outcomes? How do we know we've achieved them? And then what do we design in order to get there, right? Because we don't want to just throw activities together and then see what the outcomes are. We want to make sure that we're deliberate. Collaboration time for teachers. When we talk about retention, right, salary is one major factor in teacher retention. But when you ask teachers who leave the profession, pay is not, you know, always the main thing. It's important. If you have trouble paying your bill, you have trouble covering health insurance for your family, that makes a big difference. And you may change profession because of that. You want to make sure you have the life that, you know, where you don't constantly worry about where the next bill comes, the bill payment comes from. But it's respect, and it is time to collaborate with colleagues. Those are huge factors. And so we've had these conversations, again, for a while, about creating more collaboration time for teachers. And, you know, we talked about shortening the school day, but there are other ways to do that. You know, we're not going down that road anymore. You know, we're not going down that road anymore. But it can happen in our literacy program. We've done this, freed up teacher time to collaborate by having additional staff in the buildings to free them up. The instructional model, right? We've said a lot about project-based learning. We see this, you know, when we talk about ag programs, right? Learning to do, doing to learn. That's exactly what it is, that first part of the FFA motto. You can't learn, to use Larry's phrase that he's stolen from someone else, you can't learn to ride a bike by just memorizing the parts. If you don't get on the bike and you fall off and you try again and you get better at it. So it has to be, at some level, we have to get to this application-level learning, interdisciplinary learning. Our lives don't work in clean segments of, oh, this is my math time. You know, we need to make sure that we look at cross-curricular work, work-based learning. You know, we have a work-based learning coordinator and his workload is so heavy that you'll see in the budget that we're actually going to add another person. Works directly with students and companies to make sure that students have hands-on learning experiences in the actual world of work. Other themes, you know, how do we look at grading? And how do we look at report cards? So there's a project going on this spring. And then how do we help teachers with their professional learning and with coaching them? You know, in the technology world, we've done this with instructional technology resource teachers. We've had a number of ITRTs. But what does that look like for literacy? What does that look like for math and other areas? How do we go down that road? And we've already changed the job description of ITRTs more into that, that we transition them rather than hiring yet more teachers out of the classroom, but transitioning our ITRTs into these coaching positions. Letters is, again, one of the key pieces. We've talked about this from the very beginning. You know, we can talk all about innovation, but unless kids can read and can write and understand the material they're dealing with, you can be innovative all you want to. If you can't read the science, you know, then you're stuck. And so early literacy is key and has been key. And over the last year, we've done a lot. We had a pilot project at Wayland going with Letters, which is a professional development program for teachers of reading. And it was quite successful there, even during the pandemic. Some of the growth that teachers saw was just unbelievable. And so we implemented that division-wide. And we can do more there because, again, it is that critical. And again, it's based on cognitive science. At the middle school level, we're working with Harvard Proving Ground. We've talked about this, you know? How can we bring the best people to the table? This isn't about a Harvard curriculum. It is simply researchers who can help us analyze, in this case, math achievement and to look at strategies that help students be successful. Students who traditionally may not be successful in math. Because in math, you see this a lot, I'm just not good at math. Well, that's not really how it works, actually. There are a lot of things you can do. And a lot of it has to do, you know, with mindset. You know, whether teachers collectively believe that students can achieve in math and students as well. And we're looking at strategies that translate to other subject areas. So we're not having Harvard at the table just to improve math, but to find strategies and rigorously evaluate them in Rockingham County Schools to see whether they are beneficial to all our students. And then Learning 2025. We want to have now 160 national demonstration sites. Again, the National Best Practice Center, National Dropout Prevention Center, working with us on strategies that can really help students in that world where things are changing rapidly, where these skills of communication and collaboration and critical thinking and creativity all are important in the service of the community, the citizenship piece. And so that's, that's going to continue as well. So those are some of the major projects at every level, right? And oftentimes, they require a time, staff, resources, and certainly some of that is in the budget. Now, when we talk about next year's budget request or my recommendation to the school board, we do want to see a 5% raise across the board for all salary scales. At the state level, this is in pretty much all the budgets in one version or another. One of the budgets has kind of 4% raise plus a 1% bonus. But in general, 5% is what everyone's talking about. Now, that basically is a cost of living increase, right? When we look at inflation, 5% for all the salary scales keeps up with cost of living. And it's what most school divisions are looking at. You know, that's what state funding is going to be based on. We get the state share likely for a 5% raise. But as always, when the state says, you know, teachers are getting a 5% raise, that means some teachers, the ones that are required by the standards of quality and the state's providing some of the money. So we'll give you some of the money for some of your teachers. And of course, the locality has to make up the difference. And so we've traditionally, we also speak, you know, with our county connections to see what the county wants to do. And again, the 5% across the board raise, the cost of this alone, right? When we talk about budget increases, just 5% raise, $5 million for our CPS, right? That's the cost of a 5% across the board raise. We have additional improvements to a number of salary scales. Again, we talked about classified scales that we've previously changed and improved by significantly more than this. Clerical scale, for example, bus drivers. And so this year, that would include, in terms of classified staff custodians. And we also have our LPNs whose pay is not competitive. We always look at surrounding divisions and the region. Michelle Judd, our Chief HR Officer, does all that work with her staff to give us a good sense of where others are and how we can remain competitive. And then specifically for the teacher pay scale, again, national teacher shortage and other school divisions' attempts to improve that more. So in this budget recommendation, the teacher pay raise would be 7%. So not 7% on top of the 5%, 7% for teachers, 5% across the board, just to make that clear. And then supplemental scale. So the last time the supplemental scale was changed overall was in 2005, 2006. That's a while ago. And we've made some adjustments in the meantime. But we did a study, by we, I mean Michelle and her staff and athletic directors and I believe some principals at the time as well, back in 2018. And they came back with four different options. Now, at that time, our budget was such that those improvements simply weren't possible, where we could barely cover pay raises in general. And so we brought this back, again, to the budget process this year. And the supplemental scale is based on that 2018 review. The changes that are important are that in Rockingham County, many of the extracurricular stipends only go to nine years. So if you have, for example, a coach or an advisor for an extracurricular activity at nine years, that was the highest it would go. And so that's now, in this recommendation, this budget, it would go to 15 years. And then there's also a 5% increase of those scales because the extracurricular scales aren't tied to the overall salary scales typically when we have an improvement, just like some other cafeteria monitors, which, by the way, will also be improved this year. And they're on an ancillary scale and an ancillary pay sheet, basically. And so those will be improved. But the cost for the supplemental scale improvement, again, 5% overall and then years added and a couple of new positions added as well that would help schools, the cost of that is about $400,000. Instructional increases, about $1.3 million. They include an extension of our Groyo teacher program. So we've already been very successful. We hired seven special ed teachers out of a program that Larry and his team implemented with local universities, where staff who had a college degree but weren't endorsed to teach could get that program paid for. And now we're trying to expand that to full-time assistants with a high school diploma and to work with local community college and universities to get them endorsed as teachers and get their college degree. And the cost of that program is $300,000. So that's creating our own teacher pipeline. Additional elements in here, summer school, some instructional software. There's a significant increase in special education, but a lot of that has to do with a movement of hearing-impaired interpreters into the special ed budget. That's, that comes off the salaries. But then important fine arts, right? So we're not just talking about improving stipends, you know, for coaches or extracurricular activities, but the fine arts budget. So the fine arts budget right now is about $70,000. And a couple of years ago, Beth Harder and I talked. And she said, you know, I have, I'm working on this report. It's called State of the Arts and what it would take to fund fine arts at a level that it should be funded. And seemed outrageous to her at the time, I think, because it would almost double the fine arts budget. But with state revenue increasing, you know, if there's ever a year to make that happen for our fine arts programs, this is it. And so the fine arts budget would see a $60,000 or so increase. Other positions that we have in the budget total up to about $1.8 million. Additional school counselors, letters you saw earlier, early literacy, right? That science, brain science-based or cognitive science-based reading program, two additional letters coaches. So they work directly with teachers. They help teachers implement the program with fidelity. And so that's one addition in this budget. Again, we want to make sure that there are additional resources because it is intense. Our teachers are working through year one in most cases right now. And it's an intense program. We have classroom assistants freeing up teachers for some activities so teachers can collaborate. That's a model that has worked well. But we do feel that we need two additional coaches in that area. EL, additional EL teachers. You see the second work-based learning coordinator. Again, that person works directly with companies in the area and with students to place them. And that's been really, really successful. So what Eric Baylor's done with it is, has been really amazing. I just see Eric nodding his head over there. It's sunny, you know, to have these connections. Hundreds of students that he works with that then have a chance to do something actually in the field. Tiered Systems of Support. So this was a request that was actually in the Tiered Systems project from the very beginning. Two additional social workers, two additional psychologists. We've changed the project a lot. But at this point, we're hoping that this year we can add one psychologist, one social worker, and then hopefully in next year's budget, really complete that. The empty spaces you also saw for the Strong Starts program. So we had four in that structure. At this point, we have two because we're still working intensely with those two programs to really figure out how to set it up perfectly and then add two programs in the other attendance areas. And then there's some others, admin interns, some special ed teachers and assistants, Ed RA, halftime PE teacher, and then also a halftime PE coordinator. MTC, we'll see an increase of about $600,000. Part of that is the Aviation Maintenance Technician Program that's being implemented. Also, an additional position, I believe, in auto tech. And then just some additional costs, right? So for repairs and other resources. And so what that all adds up to, not these numbers, I mean, these are selected, again, highlighted expenditures, $164,419,567. So it's a pretty significant increase, right? When you look at a budget increase of almost $10 million. But again, important to remember that the 5% pay raise plus the salary adjustments are $7 million of that all by themselves, right? So that's why these numbers do get so high because, again, the cost of living and the cost of things just increases and has increased pretty tremendously over the last few years. When we talk about revenue, tuition, non-resident tuition, Medicaid reimbursements, we expect a slight increase. State revenue, this is where it gets tricky because we don't have a state budget yet, right? So the House and the Senate adjourned to return to finalize the budget. So at this point, we don't know the number. However, as is always the case, you know, Cheryl doesn't just take the highest number and say, yeah, that's what we'll go with. It's really a fairly conservative estimate. So we had the governor's budget. So at the time, Governor Northam submitted a budget. And then the House and Senate budgets. And this is closer to, so the House budget is lower. The Senate budget actually would be a couple million higher. And the governor's budget was just a little bit higher than the House. And so that's what we went with. Worst, well, I don't know, worst-case scenario because they can make whatever decision, you know, they ultimately decide to make. But if the lowest of the three gets adopted, the House budget, it would make a difference of about $600,000. So we'd have to look at, you know, how do we come up with $600,000 in our budget? And that's certainly, if that were to happen, will work. To make it happen, hopefully, it'll be higher, right? That would be a nice. But it's certainly a conservative estimate as Cheryl usually does because we don't want to be in trouble and then say, hey, here's, here are all the things we want to do and then we don't have the money. There are expected increases in a number of these items. Compensation supplement, that's the state share for the raise. Again, early reading intervention, at-risk add-on, and also increase in sales tax and basic aid. Federal revenue, a decrease of $1.1 million. Again, just like the significant federal increase happened with SRFunds, we expect to spend about $1.1 million less in SRFunds next year. The state learning funds, there was a $350,000 fund that's now going away. And then the local share, right? So this is what then makes up the difference between these other revenue streams and what our total budget would be. And so we ask the locality in this recommended budget for an increase of $2.5 million. If you think about it in terms of what does that pay for? That basically pays for the local share of the 5% across the board increase. And, you know, people have asked, well, why not ask for more? Well, it's really important to remember how the local share has developed over the last 15 years, right? We can't forget about that. So that total budget should be the same number as on the earlier slide, and it is. We have additional, we have additional capital projects. You see cash reserves of $1.2 million. And where that goes in terms of expenditures, Broadway High School addition. That's important to point out. We expect to expand Broadway High School over the next two years. And that's a $10, $11 million project. And it is not in the county's capital improvement plan because we have worked hard and Cheryl's worked extremely hard, again, with her county counterparts, to allow us to pay for the Broadway expansion, basically in funds we have saved elsewhere. So when we received SRFunds, when we received funds from the federal government, we tried to create as much flexibility for the school division as possible. And so it will allow us to actually pay for the Broadway expansion without asking the county to use their funds for it because there are additional projects coming. There are a number of projects in the capital improvement plan. And some of the things that we've done, and in fact, some of the expected revenue increase from the county would likely go to debt service to get ready for all the renovation and expansion projects that are coming. At McGaughyville Elementary, Elkhorn Elementary, Spottwood, Manavideo. So there are a number of projects on the horizon. MTC, again, you've heard about that at the MTC board meetings. And so, but this is a first step, right? To architecture and engineering and then to begin construction on the Broadway expansion. And then a cafeteria fund, right? That's always a separate item and balanced as well because that pays for itself. So a request to the Board of Supervisors, I said that, increase of $2.5 million. And I keep using the same slide because the organization that put this together, they haven't updated it in a while. But when you look from 2008, 2009, so when, you know, just before the bottom fell out of the economy and we had the Great Recession, the local share of our budget made up 37%, right? And by 2015, 2016, it made up 47%. So when the state didn't step up to the plate, our local funding body did. I remember VRS Hold Harmless, millions of dollars. A locally-funded one-to-one initiative where the county said, we're making this possible for the students that when technology is the best tool, it's available. Don't spend it, you can't spend it on anything else, but we will fund it. That was, you know, again, a project that increased the local share of our budget. And when you look at state funding, per-student funding, if you hold it for inflation, right? From 2009 to 2018, now the state provided 13.6% less money, right? And so the local funding body stepped up. And so it's fair enough to say, now that state revenue is increasing for us, right? What do we do with the request to the locality? And to be honest about it, they've stepped up over and over and to say, what we're asking for is the local share for the 5% raise. All the other things we want to do, we will do that by making sure that we use federal funds that are still available and state funds to cover that. Teacher pay raises and everything else that you saw. And that's always important to understand. So that percentage would be lower. If I'm not mistaken, it'd be somewhere around 43% or so if this becomes the budget. Because, again, local revenues are expected to increase. But those are the open conversations we have with our counterparts at the county But those are the open conversations we have with our counterparts at the county to say, for so long, they've stepped up to the plate as, you know, Mr. Breeden talked about in his VSBA presentation. And now it's time for us to also, when we have these other resources, to say, here are all the things we can accomplish and we can do it with state money, right? So our total local request, if this budget recommendation is approved, would be $70,866,510. Next steps. So the school board will meet tomorrow at central office at 5:30 to take a vote on the budget. And then on Wednesday, March 23rd, if the budget is approved, I'm scheduled to present to the Board of Supervisors at the county office building around 6:00 PM. So they have, they have the opening and then this budget request would be the first agenda item with the Board of Supervisors. It's a big budget. We certainly have the needs and we've done really good things, you know, in these areas. And so I do hope that this board will approve this budget recommendation or this recommended budget. And I'm also hopeful that the Board of Supervisors will, as, as they've done, support this budget request and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Questions? What's the, what's the breakdown for coaches with the increase, do you know?
Well, it depends, right? So for example, if you have a coach, so in general, if you were a third-year coach and now you're a fourth-year coach and you're in a bracket, that bracket would increase by 5%. If you, on the other hand, let's say you're a coach who's been coaching for 15 years, right? And because the old supplemental scale ended at year nine, now you're going to move all the way to year 15. That can be an increase of about 23, 25%. Because it adds those years of experience, right?
That was my next question.
Yep. Because we do, so what happens sometimes, you know, our scales in some, even on the, on the other salary scales, sometimes the scales, for whatever reason, no one thought someone would be working in a particular position because of the prerequisites for more than 20 years. Well, and then we find out someone worked there for 28 years, right? What do you do? You don't just want to say, well, we'll stop at 20. So we've also made an effort in other scales to kind of extend them out. So that's basically what this does. So coaches that have lots of years of experience, they'll see a more significant increase, but that's simply because their years are now part of the scale.
Additional questions? I can say that, I'm sorry?
No, you, another one I had a question I had real quick. You said there is a $60,000 increase to the fine arts. Can you explain that? Can you just explain that?
Oh, yeah, there, so for example, you know, in fine arts, it's been, instruments have to be replaced, right? And so there's never really been a budget for that. And so what, what Beth did, for example, is to look at what does it actually cost to run a fine arts program? And so in the past, we would have things like, okay, these instruments are way past their time, right? Just like we do in sports with uniforms, right? They are replaced. Now, uniforms are a separate thing and that's the boosters and it's a four-year replacement cycle. But with band instruments, you know, early on, you start a band program and all of a sudden you have brand-new instruments. Well, 10, 15 years later, it's not the kid that's not playing the right note, right? You can't get that trumpet to play the note, period, whatever you try. So in that case, there was no budget to replace it. So we had to rely on, you know, finding one-time funds. It's not that we haven't helped with fine arts. So at Broadway High School, I think, a couple of years ago, you know, the curtain had to be replaced. So when the school was built, you know, brand-new curtain for the auditorium. And then all of a sudden, you look at it, you know, 20 years later and the back, it's just, it doesn't look good, you know? And so we found one-time funds. And so there's more of a replacement cycle for things that are important in, in the fine arts programs. So it's a lot of supply. So it's not, some of it can be professional development, but that's basically what that comes down to is having a sustainable fine arts budget.
That's a $60,000 increase of the, did they have, was it $40,000 or $50,000 I saw?
I think it was $70,000 and goes to about 130, I can check it out.
It's 77.9 to a total, proposed total of 140.
Yeah.
140.
Just about. Thank you.
My last one is, there was, I saw no, there wasn't anything in the budget for school resource officers in there. Is that something you didn't consider or something that you did consider or?
Yep. So with SROs, every two years, every school division has to, this is a new state law from two years ago. Every two years, the working relationship between the school division and the law enforcement partner has to be reviewed. And for us, that's coming up this spring. So, you know, if you look at what other school divisions have done, they've put committees together where, you know, that relationship is reviewed. I know we've heard a lot of press, you know, I've seen a lot of press and heard a lot of news about school divisions reconsidering that relationship. That's not what's going on here, as you know. We've added SROs over the last few years. And so at the spring, that will be a consideration. We also don't know yet, so this is one of the reasons there's nothing in the budget. We also don't know whether Governor Yonkin, when the budget comes to him, so right now it's House and Senate, and the governor's budget was Governor Northam's budget, right? And so we don't know what amendments are going to happen. There's been some talk, and the governor said it, that he wants to increase funding for school resource officers. So at this point, it's a good time to wait and see what happens. We have to reevaluate, you know, the process anyway. What do we see in terms of our safety committee, what are recommendations? And then to see whether state funding materializes for that. That's why it's not in the budget.
And, but to be clear, we've added one SRO in a bunch of years, correct?
Yep.
And that was, I think that was out at Dayton, or it's not Dayton.
It was this past year.
Right?
Yes.
My concern is that we're not taking that part of it serious and finding one SRO. I think I said last school board meeting, the one SRO takes care of five schools. And so when we, when we look at the response time, especially for Montevideo Middle School, that's the only middle school that lays outside of a town. So when we look at a response time of an emergency that may happen there, it could be quite some time before someone would show up, depending on if the SRO was at Spotswood or he was at court that day, he was at training, things like that. So I hate that we're leaving it up to the state to finally give us enough or say, hey, we're going to give you, you know, we're going to do this for you instead of kind of like looking at your budget here and looking at, you know, the new position there like with Eric Baylor, you know? Instead of looking at that and weighing, when I'm looking at, I'm weighing over these, these positions that we're adding on to towards school safety and our, our kids' safety. And that's what I would like to see. I would have rather seen at least one, you know, a plan, I don't even think I saw a plan in here where you had at least one SRO over the next five years. Now, we're looking at, at school safety and we were talking about therapist, well, looking at the counselors and things like that. And we don't have that kind of plan. So I wish I would have saw something like that in, in this report today of having that, so.
I think the process would be that if you want to, I don't know that you would add one SRO and then put that SRO, let's say, at Elton Middle School for the east area, right?
That'd be a good idea.
Again, if the, if the plan develops, you know, in the conversations, in the review with law enforcement, then certainly, you know, there can be that conversation with the board to see whether the board wants to add four SROs, right? Because then you have it covered. I mean, you, if anything, just like you have now at the high schools, you have one SRO at each high school that covers the feeder schools, but it'd be more likely to add four at a time than one, right? One worked with RA, right? Because you have that one school. But, so again, I mean, my recommendation is to, again, complete the review of the program and then see what state funding materializes. And if that doesn't materialize, then that's a conversation for future consideration, at least in my recommendation.
Others?
I've just lost track. Where are we at with cafeteria funding? I know it's a pass-through, but typically parents have had to pay and USDA stepped up during COVID. And then I think, are they going to spend funding?
Yeah, that's changed again, right? Yeah, so that, that provision is no longer going to be there. So families will pay for lunch, students will pay for lunch again in the fall. Yep.
I would just say that it seems like a short while ago, but it wasn't that we were trying to identify $2 million of savings.
Two for you.
Two for you, yeah. And we're not able to do that at that time. And to be sitting here, I don't know how many budgets, Lowell, this has been, been a lot of them. To think that we're going to pay for a high school renovation without asking the county for additional money is just, I think, a tremendous accomplishment for this division. And it speaks highly, I think, of the, of the fiscal responsibility that is demonstrated by those in charge of, of running the system. So congrats on that.
You heard that, Cheryl, right? That's you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel.
Thank you.
Thank all of you for your hard work and for seeking out our input along the way. Next, we'll move to board member comments. Dr. McQuilkin, I'll begin with you.
Well, I would just like to echo Dr. Scheichel and, and executive team and Cheryl. And kudos to you all and to the Board of Supervisors for working together to ensure that we continue our quality schools and as we continue to get better. So it's a big thank you. That's what I have to say, just a great big thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Falk?
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the hard work that the long hours put into putting all this together, just like with every year, and we are making progress, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
Pass.
Ms. Lower?
Again, thank you to all, everyone for all their hard work. Am I off to him? I'm sorry.
Thank you to everyone for all their hard work. And also just, I want to wish quick good luck to everybody competing at Area Rally FFA tomorrow, especially one little young lady who will remain nameless, but she knows who she is. Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you to all. I regret that I will not be able to stay for the tech center meeting. My wife called, phone's ringing now, that she'd had some sort of injury to her wrist that I need to go check that out, I guess. So I don't know how happy she'll be with me that I waited until this meeting was over to do that. But anyway, thank you all again for the hard work and also to the tech center group as well. With no further business to come before this meeting, we will adjourn and we'll see you tomorrow. Yeah, right, or in five minutes. Thank you.